That was the board's order. The board you have in front of you is minutes from our previous meeting. You have a chance to look over those. We will entertain a motion regarding those minutes at this time.
If you might, we're not all we are. There are thus our technical difficulties. We don't usually do our meetings seriously. We're going to have some competition.
Okay. You have in front of you the minutes from our December 15 meeting. We will entertain a motion regarding those minutes at this time.
I'm sure. I will be accepting those. Please accept them.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Moss, a second by Mr. Dickinson. All of those in favor, let me know by show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. Next thing you have is your expenditures. You've been given a chance to look over those. We will entertain a motion regarding those at this time.
Look that we accept the expenditures as prepared.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dickinson, a second by Ms. Johnson. All of those in favor, let me know by show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. Next thing we have is our superintendent's report, Dr. Crossley.
Is this working? Can you hear me? Nope, you can't? Okay. So I am privileged to present our awards monthly. We have superintendents awards that each campus principal and campus leadership team work on. So we have representation from every campus. Some of you raved through the first meeting just for dishonor. So thank you so much for that. So forgive us about 30 seconds. We'll transition now and we'll recognize all the community partners, our parents, our teachers, and our students. All right. All right. Can you hear me now? The mic's not working. You still hear me though?
Yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't good enough.
All right. The first one, I promise I didn't hear. Earl Henry first for a distinguished person who missed theirs last time. So the first one we have is Mr. Gina Woodbury. Mr. Gina Woodbury, where are you at? Come on down. There it is. There it is. Copy that. All right. I'm sorry you weren't notified last time, but thanks for being here today. I promise I hope you folks, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Woodbury. Appreciate you. All right, yeah. Next we have Ms. Amara Booker. Ms. Booker, she is a sweet and well-mannered young lady. She's the perfect student and every teacher loves to have her. It's working out? Awesome. Okay, next we have Ms. Benny Lawr. Ms. Lawr is fantastic. Oh, this is a little bit. And there's a nice, beautiful girl. Ms. Benny Lawr.
No.
All right, next.
No.
Next we have Ms. Charlie Leyva. Ms. Leyva, is she around? Didn't see her though. She is awesome to work with. She's such a kind soul. She greets everyone with a warm smile and helps out wherever she's asked to do so. Ms. Charlie Leyva. Uh, Ms. Leyva. Is it that? Yes. I say Charlie, not Garry, but that's my fault. Ms. Alvin and Alan Fornori. The Fornorians. But I took these hands for teachers at Christmas. And what I love about it is they always have a smile on their face, ready and willing. So you don't always find it. So I appreciate that. We had the Fornori's. Okay, all right. Three seconds. All right, next we have Clint Primary. Clint Primary. We have Braylon Jones. Braylon Jones. Hey, come on down.
Hi, Braylon.
Young man's a lucky student. Academic and social growth. He loves to help his teachers and classmates. Mr. Jones. All right, next. We have Allison Lee. Allison Lee, there we go. Actively seeking opportunities to volunteer in classroom activities to assist in social and academic success of all of our students. Allison Lee. All right, next we have Alyssa Rector. Alyssa Rector. This wife and husband receives opportunities to volunteer and contribute to the success of students and staff at Clint Primary. She exhibits positivity. Love that word, positivity with a smile. Love that. In all aspects of her day. Congratulations to your academic language therapist sergeant. Thank you. Oh, Lord. Next we have Willie Harris. Come on down, Mr. Willie Harris. I was just looking at earlier. He was sitting on the back row like a back row badger. He wears that shirt, just sticks out like a, I mean, I love that shirt. I hate how I put that shirt on him. He just can't. All right. I'm really with that one, okay? Supporting Clint Primary with attendance needs. He is efficient. Agreed. Detail-oriented. Hundred percent. And self-mobbing all the time. Mr. Harris has been a great addition to our staff last year and this year, Mr. Willie Harris. All right. Next. Oh, oh. You might get ready in the house for this one. Get ready. Okay, all right. Next, we have the best volunteers in all the land. Brotherhood of Fulton. Brotherhood of Fulton, come on down. Thank you. Supporting our students and our Angel Free. Before a formation with the word "to" comes on, I made this look awesome today. You guys don't just volunteer in Clint. You'll be volunteering across the district. Thank you so much for your leadership in our community. Brotherhood of Fulton.
I'm gonna stand back here, you're cussing today. I'm gonna be like, okay, I'll get down.
There we go. We gotta figure it out. Hey, we'll make it work.
One, two, three.
Hey, this is a good picture for Spike. Next, we have Aiden McCarty. Aiden. And a smile. And a smile, really. President of Tech Support for the East Program, Mr. Aiden McCarty.
All right.
All right, thank you, Aiden. All right, next we have Maria Juárez. Maria Juárez, provided Christmas treat bags for every student at Habs. Ms. Juárez. Okay, next we have, know your face? I'm awesome. Okay. Ms. Barbara Holmes. Ms. Barbara Holmes, consistent support for students, staff, and families. Ms. Barbara Holmes. All right, next we have. Ms. Caleb White. Come on down. Campus photographer, cheerleader, and innovator, Ms. Caleb White. All right, next we have Scott Brown and Brazil Oakpress. Scott Brown from Brazil Oakpress provides Christmas staff meal for the Habs. We have Scott Brown here. I saw him earlier. Scott Brown. All right. Next we have Jemichael Modacet. Jemichael Modacet. Jemichael here? Okay, Jemichael is a very polite student and shows great respect to all of the staff and his peers at Habs. He is always with a positive attitude and works hard in all of his classes. Jemichael Modacet. Next we have Lakita Heron. Lakita Heron. Lakita is always very supportive of her child's teacher and principal at Habs. She's extremely helpful in assisting her child and the staff and encouraging her child to be the best that they can be. Ms. Lakita Heron. All right, Stephanie Eddy. Stephanie Eddy. Stephanie is an exceptional teacher and true team player at Habs. Even with her large number of students in the HO program, she is willing to assist other students and has established her aura with all. Ms. Stephanie Eddy. All right, Ms. Eddy, because of her and the program that we have there, there are multiple students who are actually able to graduate on time, but she's helping to catch them up. So congratulations to Ms. Eddy. Next we have James Bunch. James Bunch. This gentleman and I, Mean Gentleman, provided cats with, uh, staff with Christmas dinner from Big Jakes. We applaud him for being supportive to our creative action team school staff. James Bunch. All right, Brandy Latton. Brandy Latton. Brandy has done an awesome job of turning around and getting on the right track as a student. I can't wait to see what he will accomplish next year. Congratulations, Brandy. All right, next we have Darlene Bailey. Darlene Bailey. Ms. Bailey makes extra effort to use academic language inside the classroom. It's evident that her students are learning appropriate technology and science. Thank you, Ms. Bailey, for making a difference in the education of ours. All right, next we have Kehyera Wilson. Ms. Wilson is extremely dependable and always takes the initiative to work ahead. Thank you, Ms. Wilson, for all that you do. Jessica Burnson. Jessica Burnson donated fabric equipment materials to our East Program at Yerker. Thank you, Ms. Burnson, for all of your kindness. All right, next we have Carson Harries. Carson Harries, you in the house? Carson has improved so much this year. He listens to his teachers and follows all directions. Wonderful progress from Carson Harries. Pre-camp. Jovette Harries. Jovette Harries. She works with teachers to help her son learn and grow as a learner. Ms. Harries. Kara Burton. Kara Burton. She loves her students unconditionally and forms a connection with each and every one. Ms. Kara Burton. Stephanie Leyva. Stephanie Leyva. She comes to work each day with a smile. She loves her students and puts time and energy into each one. Her positive attitude is contagious. Ms. Leyva. In Grandview, Casey with Arkansas Gaming Fish. They came to us and brought lots of animals and other funny things for many field trips. The kids especially loved Slinky the Snake. Grandview, Casey with Arkansas Gaming Fish. All right. So if you are a high school notification, could you come down, please? If you're a high school notification from HO High School? Hold on. So you are a late addition. I'm gonna be real honest with you. You're a principal and I'm late, but I don't have to pronounce. I'm gonna say, I want you to say your name, who you are, and what you're proud of about yourself right now. Hey, off the cuff, it's okay.
My name is Cameron Robinson, and right now I guess I'm proud that I graduated with my associates last December, and I would, I'd then send this to the University of Long Matson Academy.
Is anybody else notified by the high school to come here today? Come on down. Say your name, who you are, what you're proud of about yourself. We'll get a note when you don't worry. Quick or send yourself.
My name is Chelsea Madden, and I work with the council at the high school, and I guess we probably, um, I guess she's been in the school system over the years.
So Donna Watson, I think you might have written her.
She's amazing.
Is it, say it loud.
Yes. Chelsea's amazing. She's efficient. She has a smile on her face. There's no task that she will not do, bless her heart. Uh, we, we have some files that need cleaned up, and she has spent countless hours in that file room. Uh, she has been the best addition to our center.
All right, anybody else from the high school? Okay. Sure? Okay. Let's say this before we go to the other board business. Thank you for being here. Thank you for coming earlier. Uh, we're not perfect. Nobody's perfect here. Uh, but it takes all of us doing it together, okay? Um, I love you, appreciate you. Stick around for the next little bit. I don't think the meeting will be very long, but we're here for board business. Thank you.
All right, continuing. You're continuing with our agenda. Don't forget, if you have anything else, you can use your superintendent.
Not as a superintendent, but we'll progress to these student reports. All right, now we have Kelston Mas, who's gonna come down for us today. You heard from him earlier. This is something new that we're trying out. Uh, Kelston is on the Student Advisory Committee. Um, there's, it's a group of about seventeen or eighteen kids. We're looking to expand it out, grades five through twelve. He's nominated by his peer group to speak today to you all. Uh, he's very, very much involved in the school system and has a long career of open service, I believe, in some of the best ahead of him. Has a hard goal, love being around him. Um, so Kelston, I'm gonna give you a life of thought. I think the one down there is probably gonna be the one, but she wants to sit in my seat. She just can't. But he's gonna present a couple of things. One, talk a little bit about the, the progress of the Student Advisory Council and kind of where we're at with that. And then a little bit about what we're projecting forward, about the opportunities that he heard today about the Magnum Brand. Cause he's, he's been involved. His group created a long laundry list of clubs and activities that they believe would be great for students at all age levels. So Kelston really does need to know their introduction, I think, you know, think the world of them. So Kelston, go ahead and talk to the board. And board, be ready for questions. You can ask any questions you would like as, as board members. Kelston, go ahead.
Okay, so this school year, um, I know I'll be going with you, so I won't have the big opportunity to, I won't have the opportunity to do this, but for our upcoming children, I feel like they should be able to do this, and I feel like it would help them for their future. So we're trying to add on some extra, um, activities for the students after school, during school. And some of those, um, activities consist of chess club, a volleyball team, and et cetera, et cetera. And, um, not just students from the high school, but like the lot of the students from high school can't know what media that is, but also the students from Habs. Um, I wish we could get some of the students to talk to us. But, um, I know Yarick's students have the high school. We all can't know what opportunities and, uh, we all can't know what, um, activities we think we should have at the school that will help students for their future.
Yep. So what about the opportunities in the, in the Magnum Brand? As you were thinking about those, how do you think that would, if you were, for a middle school student that's really going through this, what would have excited you about that?
Um, I would love to have the opportunity. If I could restart, I would. So, um, I know I'm kinda sad that I don't get the opportunity to do these things because I know coming up, some of these things might help me, and I have more opportunities to take through my careers as I grow older in life. So, um, um, that's a good opportunity to help and it would lead them on the right path, especially at least with teachers, the community, parents. Um, they're a big factor, and so we want them to come out and help with the activities too, so the students can grow up and know which path to take and what's the right path.
Anything further? All right. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Mas? Since this is last year with us and, uh, he gets a lot of wisdom, this experience with us for thirteen years now. So, um, do you have any questions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
You said you're interested in agriculture, business, and nature?
Exactly.
What part of agriculture are you most interested in and what you'd like to say?
I'm really debating still right now, but I really want to, um, do dairy. I want to start a dairy farm. Well, start working on a dairy farm first and then get into the finances to where I can start my own dairy farm somewhere around here in Arkansas, because we don't have very many dairy farms around, but we have maybe like one or two around here. So I think that'd be a big factor for me.
Not a comment, but a statement. We appreciate you, and you have been through, throughout your school years, and through our Facebook program, a peer conversation with Dr. Crossley, and a really good spokesperson, the panel that you did for all school PD at the beginning of the school year, telling teachers how, how kids like to learn, how they learn best. And you're well spoken, you're a great advocate for the school, you're a great representation of me in the podcast. So we appreciate, we appreciate you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next. Okay, on our new business, we have our renewal of technology.
So this is our strength cloud renewal. Uh, this is something that we, we debated not having to do this this year, but we do need to continue this in the future. We found some cost savings through some other programs. Jeff Badlock is not here to speak to it. I don't wanna get into the, the techie nuance of it all. I might be out by depth on that, but this is a renewal that we have to have every single year if we wanna continue. So, um, this will be paid for, I believe, with capital funds, not operation. Uh, so this is a renewal that we recommend for, as I'm, or for this school.
I think recommendation that we, people of the, the solution. I'm saying.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Johnson, a second by Ms. Moss. All of those in favor, let me know by show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have our facilities rental request.
Yes, so this was a little bit of a late addition on approval. Uh, we were thinking about grant for next month, but it did get approved by all parties. We have a new system this year, which helps me out, helps you out as a board. It's approved by the principal, approved by the ED, approved by the facilities director, Reese, and it comes to me after that. So, uh, three levels of support before it even gets to us. So this is for the annual basketball benefit fundraiser with Brotherhood of Fulton, actually, who was here, Mr. Henry Officer, sending them. This is something, if you, I do not know the history of this because I'm relatively new to HO, but apparently they've put this on for quite a, a few years. We didn't do it the last couple because of COVID, but therein, um, there are employees that do that, um, twenty-fifth of March of this year. You see all of the information there, and the recommendation after all of the approvals is to you or the Brotherhood of Fulton, go to the facilities rental request.
Do you want to be there? Either from HO, that's one you plan on this?
Yes, that's my understanding. Uh, but it won't be just playing with HO, it'll also be powered on two cameras.
They have, okay.
Yeah, powered on two cameras.
If I'm in order, I move that we accept the facility rental request from the Brotherhood of Fulton.
Okay, we have the motion by Ms. Moss, a second by Ms. Dickinson. All of those in favor, let me know by show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have board terms.
All right, so we had four re-differenting last year, and one item that we didn't complete last school year, which we're repeating at this school year, which we could have. Statute just says sometime after the election, so we're swinging now, but it's a random drawing of four terms. So this previous election cycle, we have four people who were up for election after the redraw, and that was, make sure I get this right, was Ms. Dickinson, Ms. Moss, Mr. Hamilton, and Mr. Courtney, who are all up for election last year. They, um, I believe, believe are opposed, but they're, they're here on the board. Thank you for serving again. Um, two terms will be expired in May twenty-seven. One term will expire in May twenty-six, and one term will expire in May twenty-five. And that'll, uh, that kind of cycle will make sure we're on track and follow the statute. So, um, we have random draws for those individuals. We commence. Never got the president.
All right. I'm gonna start down here with Mr. Hamilton and work my way back to my chair. We have four, four pieces of paper. You get to draw one of four. There you go. Ms. Moss. There you go. Ms. Dickinson. Then one of two. And this one will be Mr. Courtney soon, since he is not here.
All right. Um, again, Mr. Courtney, May twenty-twenty-seven. Ms. Dickinson?
May twenty-twenty-five.
May twenty, you sound a little too happy about that one. I don't know about that. Um, Ms. Moss?
May twenty-twenty-seven.
All right, we got it. That leaves Mr. Hamilton.
Twenty-twenty-six.
All right, May twenty-twenty-six. Thank you very much for your participation in that. Again, the statute just mentioned to do it sometime after the election, and this is when we're doing it. So thank you, guys.
Okay. Next item is our GM and GM surfaces quotes.
Yes, so this is, this can be inspirational, but I'm bringing to you for a vote because of the day travel and what it is. So in the last two years, we've had multiple checks on our football field and the circus on our football field. It is becoming time to re-turf, and that comes at a large price tag. However, the folks that did the turf twelve years ago did a re-check. We can get through another one. I'm thinking maybe two, more conservative, like one academic year, so I think maybe two soccer seasons, one football season, uh, coming up with a little bit of a resurfacing deal. So, um, the rubber pellets and kind of resurfacing and stretching out, we can get by one more year with that. Price tag is, is under the bid limit. It's, it's, it's what you should see before you, it's fourteen thousand dollars is the vote today given. The price tag is, is under the bid limit, it's, 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 it's what you should see before you, is fourteen thousand dollars, as the quote today have given. Other companies are not quoting that same thing, so we actually sought through bids, other companies are not willing to do the same thing that we have, we need for the field, and we're just basically pitching, we'll come help you out, we'll come do it for, for the whole field, and the, the companies like, well, we'll help you to be able to make this serviceable for the next little bit in the short term, as we think about our return solution, so, um, what you have before you is a quote, um, AD Turner has worked, Coach Turner has worked on this, and we met with him, the price tag is like fourteen thousand, uh, six hundred dollars.
What kind of warranty do we have on this, uh, because, um, I thought that it was, uh, some type of warranty for longer than twelve years on this when we had it done.
So the, the advised timeframe or life of a turf field is, is really ten years. So beyond ten years, it's all about patchwork and work that they will help with. Um, this is something that they, it is not in the warranty of the initial implementation, because it's past the ten years, but they will come in and put new pellets, which kind of has to happen anyway, if you want to extend it, which will get us through, we believe, two soccer seasons and one football season, but maybe a little bit beyond that if needed. And, and the reason rationale is now there's different concussion protocols, just in general, um, which have been different in the last ten, twelve years, and this will allow us to have a more good balance on the field that meets the specifications for a field in the modern CTE world, living in the football context, or something like that.
Uh, what, uh, does this come out?
Ma'am?
What?
This will be a district, the sweetest response, yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? If no further questions, we will entertain a motion regarding Dr. Crossley's recognition.
We accept the, uh, quote for G of services.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dickinson, a second by Mr. Hamilton, all of those in favor, let me know by show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item we have is our personnel.
Before we cap it, do a thank you. So yes, I would like to recognize someone, I don't even know if they know this is coming, but this is a good thing, very positive thing. Um, Ms. Barbara Moss, are you aware? Can you stand up, pick him up? So this was sent to our office here recently, because of the hours that you've accumulated and the excellence that you've shown, and your boardsmanship, um, so you are being presented by the Arkansas School Board Association, formally, with a nice plaque, as a master boardman.
All right, ma'am, we have our personnel packet, and you have been given the personnel packet to look over, and if you have any questions that are in general and not impeding on anybody's personal privacy, we can discuss, or we can ask that in the public session. If you feel there is a need to go to executive session to ask anything a little more personal, and we can do that, or we can entertain a motion regarding the packet this time.
I can give no raw statement as you're looking at that. Um, we have the status changes on bus routes, we just have the fields and reservations on bus routes and field those, we went ahead and put those before you, just so you would know, it was working the routes, and then we actually had two teaching positions that we were able to field, um, on the disciple, which is a blessing, so two certain teachers will be in positions, um, if you go to the...
I think the motion, definitely accept them completely.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Johnson, a second by Ms. Moss, all of those in favor, let me know by show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. There's nothing further before the board?
I love it, I appreciate it.
We stand adjourned, thank you guys for coming, we appreciate you being here.